I'll call this meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Here.
Layla?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Jelka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Uh, please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? The motion is, the agenda is approved. Uh, next we'll move on to public comments if there's anybody in the boardroom or online who wishes to make a public comment at this time.
Morning supervisors, I'm Justin Jensen with Senator John here in his office. I was just here today to sort of listen on what's going on in county. So just want to thank everyone in the county for all you do. So happy holidays and merry Christmas.
Thank you, Justin. Alright, any other public comments? Alright, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to presentations. Uh, this is a continuation of our department, uh, highlights from two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, first up is Sandy Smith, County Recorder.
Good morning, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Recorder's highlights of two thousand and twenty-four. Before I begin, I would like to take a moment to pass on my condolences to the family of Pat Sass. She passed away last week. She was a dear friend of mine. She appointed me a deputy recorder in two thousand and four. So I would like to pass on my sympathies to her son and daughter. So two thousand and twenty-four brought a lot of change to the Recorder's office. The biggest change was, uh, the big, our biggest change and biggest, greatest accomplishments, accomplishment was the upgrading to a new records management system. Something that had not been done in fifteen years in Blackhawk County. We partnered with Fiddler Technologies and now use their avid software. From the conversion of over two million images and indexes to the installation, training, and official go-live date, it has been a very smooth transition. Many of the processes used in other county offices, such as the assessor and the auditor's office, are dependent on the process used in the Recorder's office. Eighteen to twenty-five thousand documents that pertain to property ownership each year are recorded in our office. It is imperative that we have a modernized recording system. This upgrade has allowed us to improve efficiencies within the office and has allowed us to offer more options and services to the business community. For instance, we now offer a Monarch, a, a service called Monarch, which is a streaming service that subscribers can obtain our data and images for a monthly fee. This provides additional revenue to the county and we already have a customer that has been, been doing that for several months. We also now have an easy-to-use property fraud alert notification system. Citizens can sign up on the county website or contact our office and we would be happy to sign them up. Very soon, we will be rolling out an honors reward program for veterans. This will allow local merchants to show gratitude to those who have served. Also in two thousand and twenty-four, we were successful in finally getting two ARPA projects up and going. One is completed and one will be completed very soon. The first project involved nine new office workstations that now meet social distancing recommendations. The other project is the historical digitizing project and this is a continuation of our ongoing efforts to provide more information online. And it will include deeds from eighteen fifty-five to nineteen sixty-nine and they will be getting that, begin that shortly in our office. The Recorder's office is also authorized by the US Department of State to act as a passport acceptance facility. We have been told that we are one of the busiest facilities in the state and process nearly twenty-three hundred applications per year. Twice a year, we bring our passport agents and travel to UNI and participate in their study abroad fair. This is a great event and allows us to assist students with the application process or just answer any questions they may have. This is our employee Rhonda helping at the last fair in November. Another busy department within the Recorder's office is our vital records department. We now can provide birth, death, and marriage certified copies across county lines. So if you were married in Polk County and do not want to drive to Des Moines to get a copy, you can come over to our counter and have it in just a matter of moments. This is very helpful to many customers. Recorder's continue to promote Iowa outdoor recreational activities by partnering with the DNR to register boats, snowmobiles, and off-road vehicles and issue hunting and fishing licenses. I'd like to give a special thanks to Gabby for getting a lot of our information out on social media this past year with our renewal dates and stuff. That has just been fantastic. Then finally, I just want to give a big shout out to my staff. For years, we have just participated in the Gene Day for a Cause where we, if we wear jeans, we donate a dollar and at the end of the year, we give that money back to the community and then choose the charities or possibly a family in need. And to date, we have raised nearly four thousand dollars to give back to the community just by wearing jeans. So thank you today. Can I answer any questions? That's all I got.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
And the next presentation, uh, will be, um, Finance from, uh, Michelle Wiener, County Finance Director.
Yeah, no pressure, I can't. Everybody else here. I think you must have, uh. Get some exit.
There we go.
You can see what I want you to see. Alright, I am, I think I'm bringing up the tail end of these today. We, uh, cereal. Okay. So one of the most important things we did this year, we did hire a financial analyst. As you remember, we had a vacancy up in the auditor's office and decided to kind of reallocate duties and assign that position to Finance, which has been wonderful to have that help. Joe started just in the middle of September, so we're really still kind of in the gear up mode with that right now. For the twenty-five budget, I, our role is to coordinate all the department budgets. We staff at least twenty meetings with the Board of Supervisors and one of the largest parts of that is doing projections for salaries and benefits for all our four hundred employees and that is a massive undertaking. We try to automate it, but you can only, only do so much with that. The FY twenty-four audit, which is wrapping up slowly, it's taking longer than I would like, but, uh, our department prepared or assisted with more than four hundred work papers or documents for auditors. We moved capital assets tracking and all the capital assets work paper preparation to Finance with adding Joe. Uh, we do added most accounts receivable deferred revenue and some project tracking to trying to relieve some of the work from both Jen and Billy in their departments and I think we have a great team, um, working on all that now. Figure out how to. Some of the other things that we did, our community funding process really geared up. So we coordinated contract preparation, payment issuance, obtaining documentation from people from all the entities um, that were awarded funding and that, that actually take, that's a time commitment to do all that. The opioid settlement funding that the county received. We coordinated the payment process for two contracts and actually coordinated developing those contracts and I'm now participating in the opioid committee that's been formed, which has been a wonderful resource. I think we'll see some great things coming out of that. Our office also, um, facilitates the liability and property insurance claims process and also the renewal, which our rego process is a very expensive, um, time-consuming process. Lori does a great job handling most of that. One of the other things that I've spent a great deal of time on this year is working on the ARPA projects and funding. We have more than eighty projects. Some are already finished, some are in varying stages of completion, but, um, worked with tracking all those. Spent, I have spent a lot of time working with departments to allocate projects between what should or could be categorized as ARPA, what we call expense category funding and how we're using, um, our revenue replacement funding so that we can optimize the funding use for everything. We also verified all the SAM registrations for contract holders. We've had a few little pickups with that this year. A lot of the vendors, they go on and they get that number, but they don't realize there's several more steps they need to complete. So we've worked with them to get them through the rest of the process so that we know they're eligible to use the ARPA funding because that is a requirement. They have to have an active SAM number and not be excluded from doing business with federal government in order for us to use ARPA funding for the contract. Um, I also complete all the quarterly reports that are required by the Treasury. And then we get to Washburn Sanitary Sewer System, which was another big project this year. Worked a lot to prepare information of, to determine the budget increase required so that we can maintain a balanced budget for them. And it had been quite some time that we really didn't have a customer list. So I spent a lot of time with Waterworks getting those listings, refining the addresses so that we could send mailers to them and analyze revenue. And Gabby Dewitt was wonderful help to prepare the, um, frequently asked questions document and information we provided. We actually provided a magnet that they can put on their refrigerators if they do have a, an emergency so that they know how to contact urban services. And also facilitated hiring an engineering firm, that's ACOM, to review all the Washburn Sewer System needs. And then, as you know, we today hope to award the, um, contract for all the valve repairs, which will make DNR happy that we're getting those working, um, and that is using ARPA funding. I think I just wanted to thank the Board and all of the departments and their staffs for all their collaboration. The departments here are wonderful to work with and it's, it's fun to work with everyone, so I enjoy it.
Thank you, Michelle, for all the things you've been a key role in this year. Are there any questions, Board? Thank you again. Uh, it's been really great having these presentations, uh, second year in a row. We're gonna continue, uh, this every year. We'll now move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures. Let the county auditor be authorized to direct to issue payments against a very similar claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved.
Would you like to hear? He was tired of hearing. Our total bill payment today will be nine hundred seventy-one thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars. Of that, the sixty forty fund, we're paying two thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. And we, we do have a few, um, capital project payments. There is not too many, but, um, there is a payment for Cedar Valley Nature Trail, the Taylor Construction of two hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty dollars, fifty-four cents. Um, the other larger one is to Carl Chevrolet, Morris Sheriff's Vehicle, forty-nine thousand, nine oh five and twenty cents. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions today?
Nope, I've had a few more cups of coffee, so let's, um, uh, let's do that, uh, roll call again, please, Mr. Peter. Should we redo?
Do it again, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Uh, next we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the road conditions. They're all, um, good this morning, the Pedro system. We are anticipating some precipitation later this, this afternoon or earlier this evening, depending on what, uh, weather source you're listening to. So we may or may not be able to, uh, this afternoon, but we will be in as early as, um, five AM tomorrow if we are needed to. Crews are mixing sand and salt to haul to, uh, several of the outshops and then the other half of the crews are, uh, cutting brush at this time. I did want to mention that Dunkerton Road will be closed tomorrow at the west city limits. The I- Northern Railroad is, uh, doing some work on the railroad crossing there right by the, the Co-op in Dunkerton. Uh, we have notified the schools. It is out on our road notification system. So, uh, I believe, uh, people, schools should be notified of this already. But, uh, it probably will be closed from seven AM till seven PM is what the railroad is anticipating. And lastly, I wanted to invite Gabby to the podium to share some exciting news.
Thank you, uh, Gabby Dewitt, marketing coordinator. Uh, we do have the winners of our snowplow contest. Uh, everybody's very wa- waiting for it with bated breath. We had two hundred, uh, creative submissions from the public. It was narrowed down to fifteen by our road department staff and then went out for public voting. We had over fifteen hundred votes on the, on the contest. Um, Alice Scooper got the highest, um, got the highest vote count by, submitted by Lori Klingfuss of Waterloo. Received five hundred nineteen votes. Scoop Dog with two G's, uh, submitted by Erin Reiki of Waterloo, uh, also a public health employee, um, received four hundred ninety-four votes. And Darth Blader submitted by Annie Kepelman of Cedar Falls, received three hundred twenty-eight votes. And we'll have, um, once I send out this press release, we'll have it on our website and there is a link to see all the names and the votes and how, how they got the votes, but, um, it's been a lot of fun. The winners have been notified, gave permission to, uh, share their names. Uh, in January, hopefully we'll have the names up on the snowplows and invite them back for a photo. They'll get a T-shirt that says, "I named a snowplow" and, um, yeah, that's pretty exciting. They're all, all saying they all, they're picking their conservation prize that they wanted to win, so. So yeah, it's a good prize promotion. Thanks. Any questions?
Oh, I love it.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy. Oh, I'll stay up. That's okay. Um, I had one other update. Uh, the videos. Where's that at? The website. Oh, yeah, no, the, I'm sorry, the, um, Blackhawk County website. Could I just go there?
Oh, yes.
Oh, just type it in. Okay. Hold please. There it is. And then share. Alright, are you seeing it? The videos from the CGI company that we started working with back in March are now live on our website. There's seven videos, uh, again, and I, I failed to mention this last week during our, my presentation, but the development of these videos was free to the Blackhawk County. We, that's why we worked with this company that was out of New York. They produce the videos for free, um, although I feel like I should get a production-aligned title in that. Uh, but they produce the videos for free and, um, brought, sent in a videographer to come in and shoot some of the video as well. Um, but th- about thirty-four organizations also supplied video for these, for the seven videos. So it really is a testament to the community wanting to show off what makes us great. Um, it's on our website, on the homepage. You just have to scroll down a little and that shows you the seven different videos that there are. Um, and then there are, um, the sponsors, the local businesses who have sponsored some of the videos are around the videos, so. Any questions on that?
Oh, they look great.
Yeah, they look fantastic.
Yeah, I'm really pleased with how, how they turned out. It did take, uh, a little bit longer than we'd hoped, but, um, but it's a good quality, so, great.
Thanks for all your work with that.
Yeah.
Paper intensive.
It was, but, um, but I, I really enjoyed it and I, I think it really does showcase the county well and like not sharing anymore. Okay. Technology's hard. Okay, very good. Um, last update, uh, I feel like I overpromised the online store, uh, during my, uh, end of the year presentation last week. I think I've overwhelmed the system. We have a lot of really great items on there and it's just taking them a long time to get it up. Um, but we are in the process of sending out emails. We're doing it department by department. So, uh, as departments receive the email, they should then receive an email from Phelps, um, telling them that they can log into the store. Like I said, it's not gonna be here by Christmas, but Valentine's Day. But there really is some really great items and then we can change the, 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 um, items as the season changes, um, our different tasks. Inventory is the word I was looking for. Different inventory and if you have any questions about it, let me know. But, um, again, another project that just got a little bit bigger than we anticipated, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update this morning? Hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a motion. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion carries. Uh, there will be a hearing coming up later in the meeting, uh, for the lease of the body worn and in-camera, uh, uh, systems and tasers. Uh, next we'll move on to the consent agenda. This was approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Layla?
Yes.
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. We move on to item nine, contracts and payments. This is a resolution with the lowest responsible, uh, bid, uh, received from Connolly Construction Incorporated of Piast, Iowa, the two thousand and twenty-four Washburn Sanitary Sewer System Improvements Project in the amount of one hundred four thousand, nine hundred, uh, two dollars and fifty cents. Uh, be awarded and directed chair to sign the contract as recommended by ACOM Technical Services Department and Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Uh, move on to item ten, other business. Um, item A, this is a resolution, uh, to approve change order number one for the Conservation Administrative Office HVAC replacement contract with shovel one incorporated doing business as crystal heating and plumbing in the amount of minus three thousand, uh, two hundred twelve dollars as determined through, uh, quantity verification by the project engineer and utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, change order number one reduces the overall contract amount from one hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars and to one hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred twelve dollars. And, uh, the same has been approved, uh, by the Conservation Board as recommended, as recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item B, this is a resolution to accept the, uh, Conservation Administrative Office HVAC replacement project as substantially, uh, complete where the more Blackhawk County authorizes the payment of pay app number six dash final, uh, containing the project balance of twelve thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. Uh, the same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended by, for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Um, item C, this is a resolution that the suspension requested by Beverly, uh, Puma on taxes owed for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five installments. The amount is six hundred thirty-four dollars for parcel number eight nine one three dash one three dash one five one dash oh one two, located at sixteen ten Logan Avenue, Waterloo. Uh, be approved pursuant to section code four two seven point eight, the Code of Iowa. County Treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um, item D, this is a resolution with tax sale certificate assignment for lot, uh, parcel eight nine one three dash two four dash one six three dash oh oh nine, certificate, certificate two oh oh nine oh oh one one five seven. Owner Minnie Powell located in Waterloo, Iowa pursuant to section, uh, four four six point one three of the Code of Iowa. Be approved and set certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to the city of Waterloo as presented by Linda Hinsman, County Treasurer.
So moved.
So moved.
So again?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um, item E, this is a resolution with compromise offered in the amount of four hundred and forty-one dollars for parcel, uh, by the city of Waterloo on taxes owed for the lot parcel eight nine one three dash two four dash one six three dash oh oh nine located in Waterloo, Iowa be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um, item F, this is a motion of the travel request. Be approved and directed chair to sign for the same, uh, five hundred and three dollars for registration for hotel stay for Justin Brand to attend the two thousand and twenty-five ISAC, uh, new, uh, county officer school in Altoona, Iowa scheduled for January fifteenth through January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? The motion carries. Item G, this is a motion upon the retirement of Deputy Todd, uh, Newgren on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, he gifted his duty service weapon as is the policy of Blackhawk County. Gifted duties, uh, Deputy Sheriff, his duty service weapon provided he leaves county employment in good standing through voluntary retirement in accordance with the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System, IPRIS, established guidelines and regulations.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? This is a motion. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? The motion carries. Item H, this is a motion that upon the retirement of Deputy Mark Herbst on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, he be gifted his duty service weapon as is the policy of Blackhawk County uh, to gift a deputy sheriff with his duty service weapon provided he leaves the county employment in good standing through the voluntary retirement in accordance with the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System, uh, established guidelines and regulations.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? I just want to give, uh, special thanks to Deputy Hurst. Um, the Board's worked with him quite a lot over the years and we always really appreciate his leadership. This is a motion. Uh, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? The motion carries. Item I, uh, this is a resolution to pledge support for Iowa's two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-eight Strategic Highway Safety Plan and overall vision from zero fatalities on Iowa public.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Kathy?
I was just gonna make a few comments that this pledge says that we will abide by the Iowa Department of Transportation, their, um, Strategic Highway Safety Plan for two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight. Of course, it's to reduce fatalities to zero. That's been envisioned for, um, many years and so we are renewing the plan. We need this local road safety plan, fledge signed by you in order for us to be able to compete for, uh, federal grant dollars through the, um, state. Federal grant dollars to the um safe streets for all federal grant programs, so I urge you to. Approve this so that we can participate in any federal grants in the future.
Very good. Any uh there is a motion on the floor, any uh discussion or questions? This is a resolution, uh roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes, the resolution is approved. Item J, discussion possible board action to approve the proposed name of the committee established May fourteen, twenty twenty four. Going forward to be known as the Unite Committee. Some um. Make move to approve it.
Amen.
Alright, so. Do I have to hit share? Okay, so if you recall, um earlier this year, we uh came up with the uh concept of developing a committee to uh push forward efforts for. Around diversity, equity, inclusion for Blackhawk County and continue to elevate the efforts that we've already put in place um from a lot of our departments and their work, so. Um we did agree at that point that we would come back with a committee with a committee name, we felt it was important, we had a really strong response from. Um employees across all different levels and job classifications departments to be a part of this committee. We felt it was just important that they have the ownership in naming it, so we had um. Quite a bit of uh suggestions over the past several months, and we kinda, we had a whole survey and several meetings on, you know, what to call this, and. Uh we came up with Unite, which represents um an acronym for uniting, nurturing, inclusivity, togetherness, and equity. Um I want to also just say a special thanks to Josh of our Elections Department, he was a key in coming up with this concept. And uh one that uh really resonated with the entire group, and we hope it resonates uh with the principles and values that we set out with this committee. And the leadership throughout Blackhawk County, so. Um that is the name, so that's the first agenda item is really to approve the name, and then we did come forward with the charter as well, and I got members from the committee to come read. Just parts of the vision, mission, and uh the principles, so. Any questions on the name?
Uh we can take action on the name first. Someone like to offer a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second. Um this is uh, this is a resolution, uh roll call please, uh Mr. Peter.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Let me lose the.
Are they on?
Little? Jelka? Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
They are, they are saying something, but it's not, no, I don't think it's coming through. Yeah, let's stop sharing for a second, maybe, are they chatting? Is there a thumbs up or a chat feature, Al? There is a chat feature, um. So while we resolve the sound issue, we could have voting members. Place their vote in the chat feature, correct? Al? Yes, they can, I'll, I'm gonna, I'm checking some of them right now.
Uh let's take a brief uh recess while we try to resolve the audit issues.
Linda, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
It is, I imagine, sort of a quick.
I guess it's just me.
Cause I heard all your votes.
Oh, I think we can hear now.
Okay.
Alright, we just took a brief recess while we were resolving these issues, we'll wait for uh Supervisor Hall to return the room, then we'll resume the. Uh were you all able to hear uh Amanda's remarks on the uh name okay?
I can hear you, I can hear the boardroom and I can hear Linda, I've heard everybody.
Okay, very good. Alright, I'll call this meeting, uh the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors back to order. Um we were doing a a resolution on the approval of the proposed name of the committee established May fourteen, twenty twenty four. Uh going forward to be known as the Unite uh Committee. Uh there is a a motion, is there any discussion or questions for it? Uh hearing none, we'll have you read the roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Hall? Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little? Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um item K, discussion possible board action to approve uh the Unite Committee uh Charter.
I'm gonna invite members up, and we're gonna just read a portion of the charter, but just to give a little background, um we've been working on this in a smaller group, we had a kind of subcommittee of our larger committee. Larger committee come uh consists of about thirty employees, and then our subcommittee was about um. Uh seven to eight employees that uh spent several months uh developing this charter, which is really our guiding light for this committee, so. Um with that, I'm going to go ahead and let the members just read the first part of the committee charter and the unite principles, so, is that Elena?
Our vision, we are dedicated to creating a culture where everyone feels welcome, valued, supported in their interactions, experiences within Blackhawk County.
Our mission is that we work to integrate the unite principles into Blackhawk County's programs, policies, and services.
And then the first unite principle is uniting, bringing people together from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and perspectives.
The second principle is nu- nurturing, providing support and encouragement to help individuals and communities grow.
Third is inclusivity, ensuring everyone feels valued and welcomed regardless of differences and abilities.
The fourth is togetherness, fostering a sense of belonging, connection, and community.
And the last principle is equity, promoting fairness and justice by addressing imbalances and ensuring equal opportunities for all.
Thank you very much. So this is the the initial um, you know, intro to our charter, and we go on to discuss membership and responsibilities. Um and we really want this to be a working committee in a sense that uh there is an expectation to meet on the larger committee sessions, which is. Uh to start every other month, beginning in January twenty twenty five, but you'll also have responsibilities in a planning subcommittee or a work group. On things like education, communication, workforce, and accessibility, so we're really excited, we're kicking this off in twenty twenty five with. Members will have an opportunity to be on the large committee and then in a work group on a focus area of their interest. Um as we continue to work through those, it's gonna be very much an evolving um opportunity for employees to get involved in a different way. Uh we don't know exactly what it uh looks like, when we went to the um Opportunity Summit, one of the big takeaways that I think um we had about eleven individuals, um our employees participated in that. Um and hear from business um professionals about uh engaging in this type of work as an organization in that. It's not necessarily perfect, but it's the fact that we're starting and the fact that we're moving it forward, and so really trying to embed that into all of our discussions that. Um you know, having conversations about access and identifying language barriers or other. Uh varies to meet our community's needs, to meet our employees' needs is a great start, and something that we're gonna continue to build on through these principles and through our work groups. Um the action that we have listed on here, it is to keep the Board of Supervisors informed of decision points and recommendations for action items or initiatives. And then we do plan to review this um charter every two years and to kind of update it as needed with different uh focus areas that the group identifies, so. Uh we're hoping to get to work really closely with different departments um throughout the year, when and and since we have such a strong representation of all the departments and different job classifications. Um I'm very excited for ideas to come, be shared, and collaborate together, things that maybe are working in public health that could be applied to the Attorney's Office or the Treasurer's Office, things that work well in dispatch. Maybe a great opportunity for uh facilities or roads, so we're really looking forward to um continuing this committee and now to have a name and a charter to kind of help guide our efforts. Any questions at all about the charter that's proposed?
I appreciate all the thoughtfulness and deliberativeness that's gone into um the forming of this committee and covering the name of the charter, it's. Been really great to see just how collective um the the actions of it.
I'd I'd echo that, that recognizing that the concept of inclusion has sometimes been weaponized. Um and politicized, um even to the point where it's sort of at a state level being structurally attacked. Um I appreciate the leadership of the group to recognize that we have the ability at the county uh to protect and and improve uh lives for folks, so, thanks for that.
Thank you for that feedback, and we'll be uh keeping you all informed, and board members are always welcome to attend, um any of these meetings, we'll certainly get the calendar out. Um so everyone can kind of know how we're meeting, when we're meeting, um and yeah, we're really looking forward to the opportunity, there's been a lot of great dialogue already. It's been wonderful to see um employees come together and um just have a gain a better understanding of. Uh the different needs we have across the county and across our workforce, so. Alright, Gabby, did you have any comments at all, I just wanna thank Gabby um for her work on this as well, um it started with signage and um conservation, right? That's where this started, and it's now um we got a full blown committee and charter, and I think it's just recognizing the importance that um our staff and leaders uh. Um feel about this type of work and wanting to address those needs as a best camp, so. Um that's all I've got, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions, board?
I make a motion to approve the Unite Committee Charter.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Unite Committee Charter, uh any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. It is now uh nine forty three, uh we'll move on to the hearing for the proposed uh lease of body worn and in camera camera systems and tasers. Versus a motion received and placed and filed, proof of publication, notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Oh.
It's been moved and seconded, all is in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the motion is approved. Uh item two, this is motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh any written comments?
Motion.
Any oral comments today? Alright, hearing done, all is in favor, uh closing the hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, this is a motion to institute additional action to enter into a lease uh financing agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Uh motion carries. Um item four, this is resolution that the lease agreement uh with Axon Enterprise Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona. For body worn and in camera systems and tasers in the amount of two thou- or two million uh one hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred ninety six. Uh dollars and twenty cents for one hundred twenty months, be awarded and directed chair to sign contract as recommended by LU IT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Al?
Uh LU IT Director, um this is just to uh have the final contract uh approved for signature, any questions? Just to clarify, I know there was maybe some discussion, is this bond eligible, or is there an intent to to bond for this, or where are we at?
We won't issue bonds for it, um the the agreement from Axon is really a lease, so that's already debt and it's got some kind of interest factor built in, so. Um we are, not your first motions were just to allow us to. Possibly in the future to um use the debt service facility to repay the lease payments.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, it's confusing, but.
Okay.
We we may or may not choose to do that, I know you've committed some ARPA funding, but we don't have two point one million set aside for it.
Thanks.
Michelle, I did have a question, and maybe we have answered this before for us too, is I know we didn't wanna frontload this by paying a large portion of it, but would it be of any benefit to try to do maybe two years? I mean, uh I was gonna say for two of the ten years, if we had it in ARPA funding or not?
I honestly would prefer to just do the annual payments, I will have to track, fortunately, we're using revenue replacement dollars, so. And if you see our audit financial statements now, we already kind of designate that fund balance for that purpose, so. I can just keep chipping away at that until it's gone, and I, Axon has is will not. Give us any kind of a break on the payment to if we prepaid, we do earn interest on the funds that we retain, so. It just makes more sense to me to just pay what the contract requires when it's required.
Okay, and using lost revenue, it makes more sense too, I just thought maybe to ask now before I waited, thank you.
Better to talk about it now, I agree.
Okay, board, any further discussion or questions? I'll just add that, you know, body cameras are a critical component of law enforcement today, and this system uh really does improve uh. Transparency and protection for people on all sides of the camera, um and improves uh kind of continuity between all the different uh law enforcement entities. Um it's gonna make it easier for um both prosecution and defense attorneys who are obtaining things, and easier for public information requests. Um and just a much more reliable uh system, which is, I think, critical today.
I think also for that point, tasers being a non-lethal.
Yeah.
Tool is, it's important for the county to have those, so.
And I appreciate uh Nate and Al, all of your work um on this, and Michelle as well. Alright, if there's no further discussion or questions, uh this is a resolution, uh roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Um item eleven, any reports or information from the board?
I just wanted to say thank you, I was, I was gonna kind of point out the two things you guys already pointed out, um fill several voids for our several needs, and not just in the immediate term, but for the next ten years, so I truly appreciate. The board tack on that, it's a big project for us, but uh thank you.
Thank you. Alright, item eleven, any reports or information from the board? Yes?
I had a question as to availability for a special session on Thursday.
This week, um.
Board would be able to, I sent an email about it yesterday onto the board, and uh just wanted to see if we would be able to get three there at some point.
Yeah, I would, I would be available.
I'm not available, but.
Uh folks online hear that?
But what was the last statement, are we available?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm inquiring as to availability.
Yeah, I I I'm inquiring as to availability for a special session on Thursday. Uh I believe.
At nine.
Email to all of.
I think you're. You did, you said at nine AM was your preference anyway.
Yeah, but I can be flexible. I I think that uh Brian can also be flexible and somebody from the sheriff's office can be flexible as well.
I believe.
Got a meeting at eleven.
Um uh Captain Neff indicates he's got a meeting at eleven, but otherwise he can be flexible. It should be a fairly short meeting.
I'm available. I mean, I can do nine. I find what depending on what the others have.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Okay. Alright, so we should be good for nine o'clock Thursday.
Alright, so good, thank you.
Oh, I'd like to recognize um county auditor Grant Peter. This is the last meeting that I believe that he is um.
Unless there's a special meeting on Thursday.
Alright. But it's just been remarkable your service over over the decades. Uh you were my first friend at the county. Uh cause of course I knew you before running and you've always been kind of a. Oh, kind of a a guiding kind of star of of service and. Uh that's recognized not only across this county, not only across the state, but across the country as one of the best county auditors uh in the nation. And you're definitely gonna be missed, but we know that uh you're not gonna be gone. You're gonna be. Active and I think there's many exciting things coming in your your future. I look forward to hosting a book discussion um someday in the future. Um and just uh really, really appreciative of of both your your friendship and your leadership at the county.
Thank you.
And in recognition, I would like to give you this um get in recognition.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm coming. Push the chair. Awesome, very good.
Grant, if you'd like to say a few words. Are you staying for the special session?
Thank you very much. I appreciate very much that you uh have recognized me in this way. I. Uh have worked for the county for so long that uh. Yeah, I I just uh can't hardly remember anything before that, but. Um I have appreciated over the years all the support from uh supervisors, from other county departments and staff. Uh I've made many wonderful friends and. I also appreciate the support of uh the county and particularly the board in allowing me to be involved with uh. State organizations of county auditors, counties overall, and the National Association of Counties. Where I've uh done a lot of work uh and had a lot of wonderful people there as well, so. Uh it's been a wonderful job and made more so by the people that I've worked with, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any other reports or information from the board? Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All is in favor, say aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign, this means adjourn. Thank you, everyone.